Okay, now we're returning the board out of executive session having taken no action. The board will vote on the transfer when the superintendent brings his recommendation sometime later before May 1st. So superintendent, moving on to, perfect timing, Renaissance Academy.
Again, the, just from the standpoint of a public announcement, I just want to make sure that the, the, the public remembers that on May 14th, actually beginning May 1st with early voting, the Renaissance Academy bond will be on the ballot. Election Day is May 14th, but early voting begins May 1st.
Board members? I've been receiving calls, as you could probably imagine, as you guys have also, and the questions are for facts. And the questions are things like, what's the rate going to be? What other sources of income are we going to go after to take the burden off the, the taxpayers here? Is there state money available? Is there federal money available? What other money is available? And what I, what I'd like to do is to, to, you know, reiterate the fact that the, the, the website has this information on it. The website, which I don't necessarily personally like the idea that we go with a 10.4. And that 10.4 for class one or class two property specifically speaks to the 6% that this board put on the, the ballot to be careful not to undershoot the, the rate. So the one comment I made, and I've, and I've made this so many times, is that, that as of February 2nd of 2024, the rate based on a 4.25% bond market at that time, which we can't predict the future bond market, but we can definitely say that on February 2nd of 2024, that the bond at 4.25% was presented by our bond, our bond surety company would have led to not a 10.4, but a 7.08 cents per every hundred dollars on our first year of tax increase. And I've had people tell me they want all this in writing, which I will take my time and do, get that out to them. I think we need to reflect that on the board's website, that, that at this point with the bond market, it's considerably lower, the payments per month to, to cover the Renaissance Academy. So I want to make sure that that is out there. We are going to chase other funds, but we can't chase funds until we have a, agreed upon a bond. And how that's going to happen, we're going to have to, we're going to have to put that out so people can see that. But the valuation of property went from somewhere around $7 billion in 2023. It's now 7.85 billion in 2024, which is going to lead to a decrease in taxes for the people, people of Montague County. And, you know, the share has been spread a little bit further in somewhere around 11% more capacity or, or valuation within the county. So there's a lot of stuff out there and it's really becoming something where we got to start answering questions very much factual only, and we got to squash down the fact that people are pushing stuff out there that's not factual. So I call on the board members to, to please learn these numbers, please get aware of what's going on, and please start pushing out the information that, that it's inaccurate, the claims that are being made out there on the opposition to this bond, so.
Can we have Kelly Palmer come and do a short presentation at a board meeting?
That would be awesome.
And then Kelly could, I think that would bode well. Maybe we could, you know, cut that up and put some of that on, out on, I know there's, you know, buttons you can hit on our website or other places that people could see exactly what it is. And I think, I think what has been effective in the past was equating it for a, you know, $200,000 value home when we used a pop a day for excess levy and for the other bond. I, I think something tangible, it works better for people. Because I think we can say, well, it's only your personal responsibility is only going to be $300 a year. Well, they're still trying to figure out, well, what does that, is that really what it's going to be? And what does that really mean to me? So I think to equate it to something that people use every day seems to be, and seemed to be very effective in the past. And I think a lot of our citizens, especially our seniors, are not going to get on the website and figure out what it is. So somehow we have to be able to distill it down into something that people can understand. And it's nothing against anybody, but a, a lot of people are not as intimately aware of exactly what their tax bill is going to be. And I know people that are properties and businesses, you know, of course, that's an important part of how you run those things. But somehow to equate it to something that people are, can relate to, seems to work better.
I think, obviously, that I agree 100% with getting Kelly here, because we need to speak with one voice. We don't need five board members out there saying, here's how the numbers are and all that. Where if we get her here, then we can use that, and we can bounce back and forth off of her if she's here and, and get it out there. Like you said, there's a lot of them aren't going to look at that, but give them some sort of a basis, like we did in the past with them, so many hundred thousand, this is what you pay. And get a general idea of what they're, what they're looking at.
Maybe she could bring some charts even, even if we had a chart for, you know, 100, 200, 300,000 dollar homes. And also for homes valued at that with a home state exemption. Because I think a lot of our, our seniors are good voters and they, they want to know exactly what it's going to cost. And it might, I just think it's easier for them. It's easier for all of us.
Well, I think that's the end result is I've not had anybody, me personally, I've not had anybody say they weren't in favor doing this school, but they always come back with, depends on what it's going to cost me. So we have to have some sort of a number out there to be able to tell them. And I'm a big fan of any board that I serve on, I want to speak with one voice. And if we can get her here, then it's her, you know, validating what, what we need to say.
I would rather as a board get educated on exactly what these numbers mean. So when someone asks me, and Madam Walker said $300 a year, that's a 660 to 700,000 dollar house to go $300 a year. I can tell you that we need, as a board, nice job, I'm going to hand it. We need to be able to, as a board, when someone says, Mr. Lidle, what the hell are you doing here? What are you thinking? We got to be able to answer them questions. We got to be able to give, and when someone calls me on the phone and says, I have a house and, how can I do this? I can say, go to the top right of your tax ticket. There's a number that says assessed value on your tax ticket. If you take that number times 30708, according to February 2nd of 2024, that is your increase in taxes in the first year. That's not Ron Lidle saying, this is my opinion. That's a fact that that's what it is, according to 2, 2 of 24. And I personally don't expect interest rates to go up this year. They're talking three cuts this year before we sell these things. So I'm, I'm perfectly willing to go out and say to anyone that, that 000708 will be your increase in taxes based on exact, and it's not hard to find, it's on the top right of your tax ticket. It has your assessed valuation. If you go on the assessor's website and you look at the, if you click on your property in the parcel viewer and you click on it, it'll come a number up, which is your, your, your appraised value. You go past that to the property, PRC, there's a, there's another, I can't think of it off the top of my head. If you click that, it tells you your assessed value. And you go from there, you click on your assessed value, you take that times point 00708, 30, then a 708. That is the anticipated, based on factual analysis by our bond people, not something I'm making up. We need to have the facts. This board needs to be strong in presenting facts, answering questions, because every single person that I give the actual factual numbers to, every one of them says, is that it? How can I get involved? That's what I get out in public. Well, I don't get, I don't get, the most important thing is for this board to note, I mean, just 20 or 30 hours a week I'm working on this stuff. I'm literally on this all the time with people. And I'm so intimately aware of the numbers, and we need to be that way. Everyone needs to be that way, because it's just so, it's so important to have facts. I don't want people asking questions and not being able to answer. And we've been working on this for a year. We should have all the answers for the, for the, for the bond and part. There should be no more questions on this. So as a board, it's our job, it's our job, if we want this thing to happen, to not be questioned. And when someone asks you a question, give them facts. Because if you don't give them facts, they're not voting for us. I can tell you guys that right now. So very, very, very important. We can be passionate about this, I'm not passionate about numbers at this point, but passionate about this project. But if we as a board are not strong in facts, strong in answers, quick to answer, we're not going to do this thing. This thing's not going to happen.
I'm not discounting your talent to do that. What I'm saying is, and I think Nancy alluded to this, people will listen. And when Ron Lidle says, here's the number, that's what they're going to hear. I don't, you, there's going to be a lot of people, they're not, once you get past two clicks, that's the extent, you, they don't, they're not looking to, to go any further with that. But again, if we have Kelly Palmer here, then we can say, based on, you know, here, here's what it is. And we can follow up with it. That's absolutely, I agree 100%, but.
We have way more information than Kelly Palmer has on this. She can speak from authority, from where she's at. We speak, we, she is going to go straight to the 10.4, and that's what, that is abs, and 10.4 is as high as that is as far as compared to seven. It's not, it's not that big of a number when you start looking at how far down the decimals are. But we can't, we can't at this point, we are almost in April, guys. We need to know this stuff intimately. We need as a board to have this stuff. And all of our staff needs to have this stuff intimate. And we need to go with facts and we need to be very clear. Because anytime someone, if we don't answer a question quickly and accurately, it calls into question our knowledge and our dedication to making this project work. So that's what, that's what I'm talking about. I absolutely welcome Kelly. I welcome Mark to, to verify that the taxation, the, the base went from 7. something, 7.0 close billion to 7.85 billion. It went up 850 million dollars. Our tax base when University High was built was 2.5 billion dollars. We went up one-third of what that entire tax base was at that time, this year.
And that's what we need, them here to, to bounce that back and forth. If you're saying we have more information than they do, we need to get that to them. Get it all, you know, so we can bounce out. If they say one thing and we're saying something else, we need to find that, that truth somewhere in there, wherever that is.
I think the more public officials we can have coming and making presentations that are factual and that give voters, someone might not want to call me or Mike or Dan or you to do their mathematics. They may only want to call Kelly's office and say, okay, so what is it? And, you know, those are highly trusted elected officials or appointed officials that have been doing our tax work for a long time. And those are community people, so.
And that's what I'm saying, if our numbers aren't agreeing with theirs, we need to have them here and bounce back and forth and, you know, get to that right to where we tell the public, here's what it is. Because again, there's, there's a lot of them out there that, they don't have the time, for one thing. They just, they want to live their lives and get on with it. And they, they depend on the tax officials and everybody giving them correct information. And again, if, if their information's different from ours, we need to find that, that number.
And then have clear messaging on what the school is, that it's for everyone. It is not a, it is not only for the gifted, it is not only for people that want to work with their hands. It is for everyone. It is for students to find their passion and be able to move forward with that. It's for people that are going into engineering to know how to weld. So when the, their instructor in engineering school says you need to weld that, they don't all faint or fall on the floor or run, run away. Because that's, I know, what has happened in the past. So there is no ceiling on educational opportunity and there's no reason to, to have that. And it's much easier to do what we need to do for all students in this facility. You know, the infrastructure costs are high, and I think that's a lot of why the price grew the way it did. And somehow we need to be able to, to transmit that to people. Because, you know, it's a bare site that has to be, have sports put in it, has to have roads put in it, has to have everything put in it. And so I think we have the answers to all of those questions. We just have to be sure that people are comfortable with the direction this is going.
I'm, I'm done with my soapbox.
I tore mine up, but yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just become passionate that, that the most frustrating thing about this is the inaccurate numbers that's being thrown around and inaccurate claims that's being, that's out there. I just wish people would, 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 would find accurate information and rely on it. And I, and I think Kelly would be an absolutely excellent one to come in here and say, yeah, these are the numbers. This is how it will look on the tax ticket.
It's validated what you've been saying, isn't it?
Someone has to superintendent to extend an invite for our next meeting. I won't be here, so do it two meetings. If you go to 16th, is that it?
We can, we can do that. See if she's available.
All right, change order.
All right, board members, this is change order number four for the Excel Center. This is for a gym divider. The superintendent recommends that the board approve change order number four as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, change order number four for the execs, Excel Center, Gym Divider, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. That was a, that was our, we requested that, that change. That wasn't something that was, that was. I was aware of that. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Superintendent, new contracts.
Okay, we do have one, actually, we have a couple new contracts for you this evening. First is the Positive Coaching Alliance contract. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the contract as presented in your executive file.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or comments, board members?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, this was the group, correct my memory, this is the group that presented to us, correct?
Correct. Mr. Hankins.
And this is what they are paying.
Yes.
No cost to us.
Yes, no cost to us.
Okay, just, just want to verify.
Yes, WVU is picking up the tab.
Thank you. That's good.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the new contract for Positive Coaching Alliance, signify by aye. 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 Opposed, the same.
All right, next is our district internet contract with Frontier. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the new contract as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments about the?
Presented that. It's the same one we had before.
It is not. Chris, do you want to talk about the, why we're switching over? We currently use Comcast. This will be with Frontier.
Our internet is, comes to us through, let me figure out how to say it. The Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, has set up what is called E-Rate and is what we get to help us with paying for the internet. Every five years I'm required to put it out for bid. This is that year. And when I do that, I do it on the E-Rate website and companies have, who have contracts with E-Rate, they go look at it, they put in the bids that they want to do. The four bids that I received, Chantel, DQE, Frontier, Comcast, were the only ones that I received. Chantel, DQE could not provide connectivity to all of our websites, so that kind of took them out of the running. Currently we have Comcast and for this new contract, it would be 19,058 per month. Frontier was who we had before this round, but they came in at 8,350 and those prices are per month. There's no additional charge for setup, no construction is needed, everything is in place. I did speak to Frontier, the contacts that I have at Frontier, they made me feel like they're really making an effort to get a network built for the school systems, to utilize a really good, strong network. So, I, I really hope that you approve this contract.
So, what was the monthly savings again?
Um...
Roughly?
Eleven thousand. Yeah, around eleven thousand a month. It's a huge difference.
And Frontier has given you assurances that some of the glitches we had previously will not happen again.
That is what they, yes, that is what they told me. Not their email. They've actually said it to me.
And we've used them before, correct?
Yes, we had them for many years before this current five years that we're, that we're ending now with Comcast.
So this will be kind of revisiting?
Yeah, we revisited, but with a whole new network, which, which again, brings me comfort.
Okay. Hearing no other conversations, all in favor of district internet being awarded to Frontier, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Superintendent? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. We're down to our consent agenda. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda to include items A, expenditures exceeding $3,000, item B, payment of salaries and accounts payable, item C, field experiences, item D, panorama amendments, item E, are your minutes, item F, the early Head Start grant application, item G, the Head Start carryover application, item H is the Head Start monitoring with North Central, item I is the Head Start March 2024 monthly report, and item J is the early Head Start February 2024 monthly report.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Any board member updates?
You probably all saw in the newspaper about the exit 155 with the traffic lights and all of that, that we were hoping to have in place this spring, which would help buses getting off and headed north to the bus garage and, or, I guess it's north. So anyway, it's, it's going to happen, it's just going to be later than usual, but we hoping maybe they do temporary life support. I don't think they're going to do that because of the, you know, it's just a really a sketchy interchange there to begin with. So, at some point we'll get traffic control devices and do some lane changes and so, so forth, but we need it because if you're going to the bus garage from Westover, coming down that ramp and then trying to turn left is sketchy at best. Plus all the other things, Mile and Park and so forth that's up there.
And the businesses.
And the businesses. So, the good thing is coming, it's just timing.
Can I answer Dan?
I have nothing.
Nothing either.
I have nothing.
Superintendent, policy?
All right. So please bear with me and be patient as we, we move through this, as I will, after my recommendation, similar to our consent agenda for the public, read the title of each of the policies that will be out for first reading. So, superintendent recommends that the board approve policy volume 15, number one, for first reading to include item A, revised bylaw 0131 legislative, item B, revised policy 2370.01 virtual instruction, item C, revised policy 2460 special education, item D, rescind policy 2510 adoption of instructional resources, item E, revised policy 2520 selection of instructional resources, item F, revised policy 2522 instructional resources inspection and right to file complaint, item G, revised policy 3120.12 substitutes in area of critical need and shortage, item H, revised policy 3122.01 drug-free workplace, item I, revised policy 3362 anti-harassment and violence, item J, revised policy 4122.01 drug-free workplace, item K, revised policy 4362 anti-harassment and violence, item L, revised policy 5321 tuberculosis skin test, item M, replacement policy 5330 use of medications, item N, rescind policy 5330.02 self-administered medication and epinephrine use, item O, revised policy 5780 student parent rights, item P, revised policy 6320 purchases, item Q, revised policy 6325 procurement, federal grants, funds, item R, revised policy 7310 disposition of personal property, item S, revised policy 7540.02 web accessibility, content, apps and services, item T, revised policy 7540.04 staff technology, acceptable use and safety, item U, revised policy 8330 student records, item V, revised policy 8390 animals on county property, item W, revised policy 8600 transportation, item X, revised policy 9130 public complaints, and finally, item Y, revised policy 9700.01 advertising and commercial activities.
Couldn't find any for Z, huh?
No, sir.
One left, one left.
Okay. I need a motion?
So... You need a recommendation?
I did.
Okay. I didn't know if you recommended in the beginning.
Okay. I move, we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I wanted to ask, and I cannot remember which one it was, referred to cyberbullying? I'm sorry. It's in one of these.
It's probably the anti-harassment.
3362.
And violence.
Yeah. Be, yeah, that's where it was. And I realize that it has nothing to do with the change, but I wanted to ask the question. When it refers to cyberbullying here, oh, where is it? If it doesn't happen on our school site, then we're not responsible for that, correct?
It says when it unreasonably interferes with the school or work performance or participation. So it's the same rule that applies for everything and you look for the interference in school. So even if it happens outside but creates an interference in the school system, then we address it.
Because that was my question. I, you know, we constantly are debating, or might have parents call us with concerns they have that happen off school site and we can't, we are not in control or administering those. So I wasn't quite sure how we would, how that works.
It goes back to the, I think it was Tinker versus Des Moines, the old case.
I was going to say, I knew you knew the legal stuff of it.
But it's, it's always, if it impacts the school setting, so, you know, if there's something that occurred outside but it brings a fight into the school, then we have to address that. If it occurred outside and we wouldn't know other than someone telling us, then it's not really up to us to address.
Because I guess my question is, when you say, address it, what does that mean?
Will you, you follow this policy?
Okay. Because I think that's always a question people have. What do you do? Because even if your child is not punching someone or something else, it could be affecting them and you're, it is disrupting the school day, I guess is what I'm saying.
And, I mean, if it's just affecting, that's a personal matter, not necessarily a school matter.
So again, that's, then, then if the parent would come and say, this happened, look at my child, they're having trouble performing on their academics and that's why, that's not really something that we can get into.
I mean, if it's because they feel intimidated by someone in the school, we could address, work with a safety plan or something like that, which we do.
So a safety plan or something. I guess that's what I was wondering, what, what our action was.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't inhibit us from actually providing some supports for the child that perhaps was being cyberbullied outside of school, to provide them with resources or, or support or, you know, communication with them. It just, unless it's actually physically interfering with the school day itself, we don't become involved in, in the, the disposition of discipline or action against the person who might be accused of the bullying.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. I mean, I realize it wasn't what was changed in here and a lot of this is just instructional materials to instructional resources, one more things in a lot of these policies, but...
I, I just had a question about the animals on county property. I read it a couple times, but I don't have the legal mind that you have, Jennifer.
Can you tell me which one?
There's not a loophole in there that people can bring in emotional support animals.
We do not permit emotional support animals.
Thank you.
Service animals.
So, you know, somebody can't bring a ferret because they've got a calculus test or something.
No.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not trying to be, I guess I'm trying to be funny, but...
There actually was, I believe...
But I just don't want to see a loophole there where a kid or somebody could say, hey, I need the, I need my chihuahua today.
So, Neola had put an option in that policy and we did not adopt that. It was, it was optional language that we did not take.
Good, good. Like I said, I read it a couple times, I thought, I don't see any loopholes here, but...
No allergies.
Well, I mean, you see, you're seeing pets everywhere.
Oh.
I mean, places I never thought I would go into a restaurant and there's somebody sitting there with their, you know, as you said, their little...
Well, you got people with pet allergies and they're on, and people bring pets on a plane.
Yeah, I mean, they're everywhere.
If you're that nervous, pick the bus. Don't fly a plane.
That's where the last pet was.
Okay, I was just double checking. Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of policy volume 15, number one, for first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you.
All right, thank you, board members. That was a lot to digest.
It was.
A lot of us, just changing words.
We are down to personnel matters. Superintendent recommends the personnel list as presented with no changes.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved. Second. I'll second it for you, Dan.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Um, just for the public, I think maybe it'd be good if Mr. DeSantis explained mutual agreements. I mean, there's so much discussion about our staffing and what's happening there, if, or superintendent, I just think it would be helpful because there's all kind of rumors swirling with all these humongous numbers and everything else, so...
Absolutely. I'll let Mr. DeSantis handle that. He's done plenty of them over the course of the last two or three weeks and, and before I do, I want to thank him and Jennifer both for the work they've done during this personnel season. I think the position we're in is, I've used the word miraculous, I can't imagine another county that is in the position we're in after cutting 50-odd positions. And Bob, Bob actually gave me a, I'm going to steal his words, he, you know, he told me the other day, he said, I don't really look at this as, as riff and transfers. He said, this is reorganization, you know? We don't do that as frequently as we, maybe we should, you know, looking at numbers and buildings and, and moving people from one grade level to the next and, and it really is reorganization. And to, to end up with just, you know, a handful of folks that, at this point in time may not have a job, but, but as we move through the summer, we really feel strongly that they will have a job, I think is a tremendous accomplishment and it goes a great distance to the work that, that these two folks have put in, not just within the last couple months, because these folks have been working on this for the last two years, knowing that those ARP, EFRS dollars were going to go away. So, I do want to publicly thank both of them. The, the job that they have to do in going out and meeting with these people and having these very difficult conversations is, is, is a difficult job in itself and they both do a tremendous job with that. They make people feel really, really good about, I don't think they feel really good about the fact that they're having the conversation, but they make them comfortable and they make them understand, they help them to understand why we have to do what we have to do and where they're going to end up. And I think it pays tremendous dividends for this, for this board, so. I rattled Bob, but would you explain what mutual agreements are?
Well, mutual agreements have always been around. It's the option of an administration with basically the blessing of the teacher. You're allowed to move a person within your building to a known vacancy, in case you're not hiring anybody new. And if you look at just about all of the mutual agreements, it's from one position to another within the same building. So if there is a vacancy, we're not moving one person from one school to another, and if you do see that, that's because of the risk, riff, transfer process and we're basically to the bottom of the seniority list. Because if there's a known vacancy, everything's going to be posted as it's supposed to be for the entire county. So where you see a mutual agreement, that means there is a known vacancy in that building and somebody was willing to move to that position within the building and they are fully certified for that position.
Is that preference as far as if somebody was bidding on the job from another building and you're moving it?
If, if we're having a mutual agreement, we did not post a position.
Okay, that's right.
Now, if there is a vacancy because of, of the move, then we will post it. But if there's a position we're not, if, if, we're, this is especially... there's a position we're not, if, if, um, we're, this is especially true in elementary, 'cause you're dealing strictly with numbers. So if you're cutting one grade level and adding another grade level, you can just, with the person's permission, just move them, and we mutually agree, and it, it makes it very clean for us in HR that if we ever get to the point of, of having to look at certain grade levels, we can figure out who the most senior or least senior person is in position.
So you get the mutual agreements first before you decide whether to post or not?
Right. Yeah, if there is a known vacancy within the building, and there is a teacher in the building that the principal's agreeable with letting them move to that known vacancy, we have them sign a mutual agreement that they know they're moving from third grade to fifth grade. And so we didn't, didn't have to post it.
So all of our people are aware, if they're thinking that, to be sure, and talk to the principal and?
Yes, it can be, once again, it can be difficult for the principal, 'cause I might have a vacancy, but I don't have three people within my building that want it.
Yeah.
And, and if I, as an administrator, I don't want to make that decision, then I can post it, and then we'll bid on it and see who, with the cooperation of Faculty Senate, is who's gonna be offered the job.
And realistically, there are some grades that are just big, and as those children move on up through that school, there kind of always is that shifting that goes on.
This, this is a, basically, a constant reorganization. You're just shifting your resources to areas of need. I mean, this is a yearly, technically, it's a yearly occurrence.
But it's, I think it's more, um, public right now because of the jobs that we created to help support post-COVID time, and that we were funded for. And, uh, so as the public hears these numbers, I think they're, you know, thinking there's gonna be a lot of people unemployed, and, and that for the professional side, uh, you know, there aren't fifty people without a job right now.
No, no, we're, and, and the superintendent recommended more than a year ago, start looking ahead, and so we started looking at what positions due to the various funding that we knew we were losing. We just filled in with substitutes, and we didn't have to riff somebody out of a position. They knew in three years they were gone because they were just a substitute. And on a normal year, first day of school, we start probably the best part of ninety-plus, this year was ninety-three, new professionals. Uh, so we haven't got to the point yet of having that rush of resignations you get at the end of the year, but we're in pretty good shape with, uh, anybody, and that'll be on the, the transfer list that probably we'll see the next board meeting, which is very small, especially compared to other counties.
Plus you get the late retirements.
And unfortunately, and it's just like, like Jennifer tonight, we're required to do this by the first of April. You know, that if, if we were allowed to wait, um, probably wouldn't, just through, especially the professional side, 'cause it is totally different. Uh, just through attrition alone, we wouldn't have to go through this process. I feel, I feel for the people that you have to speak with, um, 'cause they're worried about a paycheck, uh, even though I'm not supposed to guarantee them a job. Um, they, they know there's quite a number of vacancies, that we follow the correct process.
Well, and it's, was legislatively decided. It was not something this board decided or you decided. This is a legislative mandated process.
And there's not one thing on this that's, that's not proper policy procedure that we haven't followed. Yeah, we haven't done anyone a favor other than speaking one-on-one and professionally with them and let them know what their options are gonna be.
And then the service people, they, that's a whole different set of laws. And you're also speaking to them personally about changes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same. Personnel list addendum.
Yes, we don't have any new positions, so we can move to our personnel list addendum. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented with no changes.
Need a motion?
So moved. We accept the superintendent's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the personnel list addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same. Superintendent, anything else good for the, for the good of the order?
No, sir.
Hearing nothing. Next regular meeting. Board of Education of the County of Montegoat will be held here Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-four. For adjournments.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.